To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes dependent upon the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to Burbank City Council Joint Meeting with Successor Agency, Housing Authority, and Parking Authority on Tuesday, May 24, 2022. I would like to invite Reverend Julie Davis, Senior Pastor at the Little White Chapel in Burbank, to lead us in the invocation this evening, and will everyone please stand and remain standing for the flag salute? Welcome.
... Ultimate source of what is good, what is wise, what is love.
Guide the able minds and open hearts of those present here tonight. We thank you for those who step up to lead because they want to build a ladder so that others may climb. We thank you for those who step up to lead because they want to share a microphone so that others can speak. We know that it is too often those who seek the most good who receive the most harm. And I would like to take just a moment right now for all of us to center our hearts and our minds and to be still for a moment for all of those victims of the Texas school shooting today, young ones, teachers. Some of the victims were public servants like those here in the room tonight. Let's just take a moment of silence for them. Ultimate One, we ask you to remind these folks present tonight that it takes courage to do what is right and to grant them your assurance as they struggle to make this city a safe and inclusive, a just, and a merciful place for every resident to call home. As these councilors engage the minutia of numbers and motions, grant them a transcendent awareness that what they are really engaging are people's lives and livelihoods, dreams, and dignity. Amen.
Please join me in repeating our pledge to our great flag. Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Present on the deck.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Present and happy to be back.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Present.
Mayor Talamontis?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to advise the community that there will be four periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and during the public hearing public comment period. Please comment for the reports to council will be taken in person only. The first period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and or agenda item except the public hearing. If you would like to participate in general public comment over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The second public comment period is for public comment on this evening's public hearing. For public comment by phone on the public hearing, we kindly ask that you call 818-238-3335 after the general public comment period has closed and when the public hearing begins. Additional in-person-only public comment period will be available after each report to council. At this time, my script called for a moment of silence, but obviously, we already did that, and I don't want to go ahead and repeat it. It's just a tragic event that happened in Texas earlier today. I was told there's 19 people that passed away, one teacher and 19 students. There were second, third, and fourth graders from what I understand. It's just tragic. They had a future ahead of them, many years ahead of them. It's unfortunate their lives were taken so early. So once again, let's give thanks for what we have here in our own home, in our families, and hopefully, our thoughts and prayers can go to Texas and help the families that were affected by this tragic event. We have three announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for May 24, 2022. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for a total of 30 upcoming vacancies on the following Board, Commission, and Committee. Art in Public Places Committee, Board of Building and Fire Code Appeals, Board of Library Trustees, Burbank Water and Power Board, Civil Service Board, Community Development Goals Committee, Heritage Commission, Landlord-Tenant Commission, and Senior Citizen Board. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, June 1 at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Transportation Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2023. The deadline to submit an application is Friday, June 3 at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one resident, non-resident required vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2025. The deadline to submit an application is Friday, June 17 at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
We have two presentations, two council presentations this evening. First is a presentation of the Austin Cook Award for Outstanding Youth. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge Austin's father, Mr. Ty Cook, who is here tonight. Joining us tonight to present the award is Sung Ju Yun, Chair of the 2021-2022 Youth Board. Would you want to come up here?
I'll talk with him. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Talamontis and council members. It's an honor to be here tonight. My name is Sung Ju Yun, and I am the Chair of the 2021-2022 Burbank Youth Board. I'm just here to present the Burbank Youth Board's 2022 Austin Cook Award for Outstanding Youth. This award's in recognition of the wonderful character modeled by Austin Cook throughout his life. Austin attended Jefferson Elementary School and John Muir Middle School. Austin's life was suddenly cut short while he was in middle school, but during his time with us, he touched many hearts and served as an example to his peers. Austin's father describes him as a smart, athletic, kind, caring, and easygoing. He says that Austin was a very good friend, teammate, and student. Austin was also a hard-working student and active in the Burbank community. Tonight, we want to recognize one student in honor of Austin, who has gone above and beyond to make a positive impact in our city. We distributed nomination forms to each middle and high school in Burbank, and there were numerous applications with outstanding students, trust me, that were nominated, and after a thoughtful discussion, the Youth Board selected one student, and I'm incredibly proud of our selection. The recipient of the 2022 Austin Cook Award is Noor Foss, a 12th-grade student at John Burroughs High School. Noor's praised for a vast number of accolades throughout her high school career. As a scholar-athlete, Noor once again boasted the highest GPA amongst the entire girls' basketball program in honor since she was in the 10th grade. Nominated by two John Burroughs High School staffs, school counselor Lisa Chung and basketball coach/biology teacher Victoria O'Ganion, Noor has also been described as one of the most active agents for social justice. Noor is the creator of the Healing Hands Club, which has aided over 150 children in Tunisia. She's also fundraising and working to purchase computers for a school in Tunisia that has no technology. Noor is the founding co-chair of the Equity and Diversity Inclusion Committee at John Burroughs High School, where she's made an incredible impact. She's the president of the NAF Council, president of the Medical Academy, team leader of the Living Library Internship, a volunteer at BTAC, and an annual camp counselor at the Tribe Youth Basketball Camp. The list goes on and on. Every year, we look to honor the exemplary character modeled by Austin Cook, and we're confident we selected the student who has done just that. Noor Foss, the Youth Board is proud to have you as the recipient of the 2022 Austin Cook Award for Outstanding Youth. Congratulations. Before we present the award, I'd love to invite up Austin's father for a few words regarding this award.
My name is Tylinn Cook. I'm Austin's dad. I would like to start off by saying thank you to the Burbank Youth Board and everyone involved in making this special night possible. For the most of you who didn't have the pleasure of meeting my son, Austin was loving, easygoing, and adventurous, kind soul. He was a huge sports fan, had big dreams of one day playing professional ball. When he grew up, Austin was 11 when we lost him, but there will never come a day when I stop thinking about my son. Just as parents of loving, living children unconditionally love their children, I'm no different. I want to say and hear his name just the same despite losing him. Being Austin's dad was the best gift ever given to me, and I will continue to say my son's name, sharing his love and light everywhere I go. This award not only allows my son's legacy to live on, but it also recognizes another outstanding youth to be honored in his name. My son's life was cut irreversibly short, but his love lives on forever through my memories of him and moments like this one. To the young person who will walk away with this award tonight, I want to say, keep making the difference in this world and feel proud that you out of so many was chosen. Your continuous contributions to the community are deservedly recognized, and tonight, we celebrate you.
I want to present this on behalf of the City Council. Certificate of recognition for receiving the 2022 Austin Cook Award for Outstanding Youth. On behalf of the Burbank City Council, I thank you for your dedicated service to your school and community. Congratulations.
My name is Noor, and I am very, very honored to have received this award. I think the ultimate goal in my life is just making a positive impact on the lives of others, and I think that's what ultimately gives meaning to my own life. And I truly do all the work that I do out of love and out of passion and out of the desire to improve the lives of others, and I will continue doing so because it comes from a very, very deep part of me. And I'm just so grateful to have received this award and hope that many other people will continue in Austin's footsteps and just continue making a difference because we really need it right now. Thank you. This is my father, Najib Fass, and my mother, Hodeidh Fala, and much thanks to them for raising me.
Thank you very much. You can't forget your support group. You can't forget that. All right. Thank you.
You can tell it's the parents because they got the camera going the whole time. That's how you know.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Next, we have the presentation of the Burbank Police Foundation's Annual Matthew Pavelka Scholarship Award. On Wednesday, April 27, the Burbank Police Foundation held its awards ceremony in front of the police-fire headquarters. All five council members were in attendance to support the award recipients. We have a recording of the ceremony to share with you, but first, I want to mention the fact that Mr. Michael Hastings, who's the Chair of the Foundation, is not able to be with us tonight because he's over at Providence High School presenting their student part of the award that they received. So he's over there. So he just called me this afternoon saying that he wasn't going to be able to attend the council meeting, but we're going to have a video to show everybody. Play the video.
This is a very special day for us, the Burbank Police Foundation. We view Matthew Pavelka as a hero that has been among us for many, many years. It's 19 years that we are celebrating his life here in Burbank as to being a hero.
On Wednesday, April 27, the Burbank Police Foundation held an event in front of the Burbank Police Headquarters recognizing this year's winners of the Matthew Pavelka Scholarship Awards. These awards were established to honor the memory of Burbank Police Officer Matthew Pavelka, who was shot and killed in the line of duty on November 15, 2003. This year, there were seven awardees. Spencer Solberg from Burbank High School, Aleah Embelton from the Burbank Police Officers Association, Devin McGivern from the Burbank Police Officers Association, Isabella Smith from the Burbank Police Officers Association, Dominic M. Puglisi from the Burbank Police Officers Association, Lan Ma from John Burroughs High School, and Avery Marsh from Providence High School.
All of the officers that are here, you're all heroes. Every single one of these officers leaves home every morning, and their families pray that they come home. In November of 2003, we had an officer that didn't come home. So for all of the officers that are here, thank you to all of your families. Thank you. Let's hear it for him.
The entire Matthew Pavelka Scholarship Award Ceremony can be viewed on the City of Burbank's YouTube channel as well as on the city's cable channel, The Burbank Channel.
Thank you to the Burbank Police Foundation. I commend the seven students for focusing on their education and working hard. We are very proud of them and wish them the best in their future endeavors. City Manager Hess, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council and members of the public, the City Council met in closed session this evening to discuss two items. The first item was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 on one case. Counsel took no reportable action on that matter of anticipated litigation. The second item was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the matter of Pickwick Investment LLC versus City of Burbank et al. pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, and the council unanimously decided to proceed with the defense of this matter.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. While we have you, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any updates on action that council took on February 2 of this year pursuant to gun stores and firearm license sales? I know we moved forward with some sort of legislation or at least staff direction.
Yeah, so council gave direction with staff to conduct analysis of crime in relation to gun stores and to bring back some proposals. Also, council directed staff to investigate a potential cap on licensing as well as buffer zones. We have commenced that analysis. We've done some iterations looking at buffer zones and how much land that affects in Burbank, and we're also working with Community Development Department, Police Department, and the City Attorney's Office to look at the crime statistics and gun statistics to develop a rationale for new legislation, and that's all the progress I have at this time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for general public comment. For members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please present a completed yellow general public comment card to the city clerk. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business except the public hearing. If you speak to the public hearing item, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report and will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum allotted time of three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is left. I encourage you to state your name when speaking at the podium to assist the city clerk with the minutes. For those wishing to call in during the general public comment period, please call now at Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any cards for you, and I also don't have anyone online, so this part of the agenda could be closed.
Thank you very much. So we don't have any callers in the chamber or on phone, so there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from council. Council, do we have a brief response? Anybody has a brief response other than join us in a couple of weeks? Thank you. All right. Now moving on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion for the consent calendar? Madam City Clerk, would you read the consent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, item number one is approve the city council minutes for the joint meeting for May 17. Item number two, successor agency minutes to approve the minutes for May 17. Also, housing authority minutes that would also include the minutes for May 17. Parking authority minutes, that will be May 17 as well. Item number five, approval of an agreement with American Public Power Association for the Demonstration of Energy Efficiency and Efficiency Development Program Grant for Energy Storage in the Amount of $125,000. Item number six, approval of Fourth Amendment to Professional Service Agreement with Karen Warner Associates for Consultant Services for the 2021-2029 Housing Element, Safety Element, and Environmental Justice General Plan Update. Item number seven, approval to accept $193,000 California Department of Aging American Rescue Plan Act 3B Funding Allocation for Elderly Nutrition Program Services and to amend the fiscal year 2122 budget. Item number eight, approval of informed consent and waiver of potential conflict in legal representation of the Burbank Housing Corporation by Goldfarb and Liebman and authorization for city attorney to execute. Mr. Mayor, on item number eight, you have before you the city attorney had passed an amendment, and I know the city attorney wanted to give a quick update to council on what you have before you.
Yes, for the benefit of the council and for the benefit of the public, I am substituting out the existing informed consent and waiver for legal representation on the possibility that the city may retain Goldfarb and Liebman on the Pickwick investment matter. The city would need to acknowledge, and Burbank Housing Corporation would need to acknowledge, that potential additional matter, so it leaves the option open, and so that's the update to the letter. The prior letter referenced our past relationship, and this leaves open the possibility for concurrent representation of both Burbank Housing Corporation on their debt restructuring and the city on a land use litigation matter.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So is there a motion for the consent?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion on the consent, but if I may, I just have a comment on item number five, not a discussion, not a question, just a comment.
Sure. Go ahead. Well, let me get a second first, and then we'll move forward.
You got it, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. Go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to, item number five, the approval of an agreement with the American Public Power Association for the Demonstration of Energy and Efficiency Development Program Grant for Energy Storage in the Amount of $125,000 for Burbank Water and Power, but I wanted to at least want to say thank you to our Burbank Water and Power Director, Ms. Dawn Lindell. I saw her in action as I represent us in Washington, dealing with the American Public Power Association and networking with them. She was definitely very instrumental with the group to bring that money here, and this is part of the Burbank Sustainable Goals about, you know, exploring storage for everybody, so I just wanted to thank Ms. Lindell and let the council and the members of the public know that this is the actual association committee that I represent in Washington, D.C., to continue to fight to bring, like our mayor says, grants, 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 bring it to Burbank. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Could I ask a follow-up question on that item real quick? I just wanted to know, what is an iron flow battery and what is the pilot program we're putting together?
We're getting on the border of pulling it off the consent.
I just want to know the one thing. What is it?
That's actually close to the end of the meeting for our rules, because now it's a discussion.
Yeah.
One question.
I just want to know what it is.
Just one question.
All right. That's it. No follow-ups.
It's in the report. If you read the report, it clearly states what it actually does. It's in the report.
I know. I just...
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Mondeep Samra, Assistant General Manager, Power Supply. So the iron flow battery is a long-duration battery. It's been tested probably about 12 to 14 times in the state of California. It has no detrimental impacts to the environment, and collectively, the grant is going to cover about one-third of the cost. But essentially, it's... So what you think of lithium ion, this is going to use iron instead of lithium ion. So it's something that's plentiful to the environment. So it can't be done in great scale, so it's a little scale. It's only 75 kilowatts, but we're going to be one of the first utilities in the state to deploy it, so I think that's really going to be... We'll see how it works from there.
Awesome. Thank you for bringing that to Burbank.
It sounds better when she says it before me reading it.
I know, but consent calendar is for a reason, so we can move on to the meat and potatoes.
So let's move forward on that, and like Councilmember Fruto says, I've always told all department heads and the city manager, obviously, whatever monies we can bring to Burbank, let's bring them to Burbank. This is very successful. Madam City Clerk, go ahead.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontis?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a time and place for the hearing on the proposed budgets for the fiscal year 2022-23 for the city, housing authority, parking authority, and successor agency. Madam City Clerk? Madam City Clerk, have the notices required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents related to the proposed budgets?
Yes, you do, and you did receive one correspondence, and council has that correspondence.
Will Ms. Jennifer Becker, Director of Financial Services Department, summarize the proposed budget in the process for this evening? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Talamontes and members of the City Council. I'm Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department. I'm here tonight to present to you for adoption the fiscal year 2022-23 citywide budget, fee schedule, and GAN appropriations limit. As you well know, the budget process involves months of effort on the part of staff, followed by several weeks of City Council review, so before we move forward to adopt, let's take a look at what we've done so far. Four weeks ago, we presented to the council an overview of the proposed citywide budget for 2223, as well as an extensive review of the general fund. We looked at the economic factors impacting our city revenues and did a department-by-department review of proposed appropriations. The City Council took the opportunity to ask some thoughtful and detailed questions of staff and requested follow-up information on several budget items. That same evening, we did a thorough review of each of the city's utilities, with BWP presenting each of their funds and Public Works presenting the sewer and refis funds. We followed that up with a full review of each of the city's internal service fund and special revenue fund budgets, along with the housing authority, parking authority, and successor agency budgets. On May 3rd, we returned to the City Council to present the city's proposed capital improvement program, where Mr. Berkman from Public Works discussed the proposed CIP projects for the coming year as endorsed by the Infrastructure Oversight Board, along with an update on the progress of our existing capital projects, which will be carried over as part of this report. We also reviewed a couple of discussion papers that were requested by the City Council as part of the budget process. And then last week on May 17th, Burbank Water and Power and the Public Works Department returned for the public hearing and adoption of the city's utility rates for fiscal year 2223, and later that evening, we returned to discuss some remaining follow-up items that were requested during the earlier budget presentations. And now, of course, we're back tonight to request your approval of the entire proposed budget and fee schedule for the 2223 fiscal year. So let's return to the chart we presented at the very beginning of our budget study sessions. Our total citywide proposed budget for fiscal year 2223 is $791,810,038. This year's citywide budget is comprised of 30 different funds with proposed appropriations, including four enterprise funds, seven internal service funds, 15 special revenue and capital projects funds, the housing authority, parking authority, and successor agency funds. The largest portion of our citywide budget is our BWP electric and water utility funds shown in green, which makes up about 47% of our total budget. The general fund, shown in blue, which is the city's main operating fund, is the second largest section of the budget, coming in at just under $220 million, or 28% of the overall budget. New appropriations for 2223 were prioritized based on their adherence to the City Council goals established for the coming year, including economic recovery and responsible development, housing and homelessness, sustainability, city services, transportation and traffic, quality of life, and infrastructure. Now, at the May 3rd City Council budget review, the council approved three staff recommendations to increase the city's reserves. These have been incorporated into the budget you are adopting tonight as follows. First, we will increase our general fund formal reserves from 20% to 25% by establishing a budget stabilization reserve account equivalent to 5% of our general fund recurring budget, right around $10 million. Related to that, we are recommending tonight that the City Council revise their financial policies to require our formal reserves be within a range of 20 to 25%. Second, we are increasing the general fund compensated absence reserve from 20 to 25% of total liability, which would require a one-time contribution of $700,000. And lastly, we will contribute funds to the city's Section 115 trust in accordance with the City Council's existing pension funding policy. Assuming the budget is adopted as proposed this evening, we estimate that about $6.7 million would be contributed to the trust in fiscal year 2223. It is important to note that subsequent to these reserve increases, the general fund will still have over $12.1 million in spendable balance remaining for any one-time or mid-year appropriations or other unexpected expenses that arise during the 2223 fiscal year. So let's take one last look at our general fund five-year forecast. Those blue lines on the chart represent recurring revenue, and the red lines represent recurring expenses, indicating that our general fund is balanced, albeit by the slimmest of margins. The budget we are proposing for adoption this evening projects a $280,000 recurring balance, or 0.14% of the total general fund budget. That balance drops to under $100,000 in '23-'24, before increasing again throughout the remaining three years of the forecast, as those last remaining revenue categories continue to recover from the pandemic. Looking at the general fund one-time balance, you can see that it has been adjusted to account for those changes in reserve policies shown on the previous slide. The $200,000 in additional cultural arts funding approved by the council at the May 17th City Council meeting has also been factored into this projection. We are forecasting an available one-time balance of $12.1 million at the end of fiscal year 2223, growing to about $22.5 million by the end of 2027. As discussed in our earlier budget presentations, this available cash is predominantly due to the prior budget savings measures taken by the council at the beginning of the pandemic, as well as the revenue replacement dollars Burbank received from the American Rescue Plan Act. Of course, our forecast is based on what we know today, and staff will return to City Council throughout the year with regular financial updates as the circumstances surrounding our economic assumptions continue to change. So in addition to the proposed budget and fee schedules before you for adoption this evening, we are also requesting the City Council approve Burbank's annual GAN initiative appropriations limit. The city is required by state law to establish an appropriations limit each fiscal year. Only those revenues received from proceeds of taxes are subject to that limit. All other funds that fall under the City Council's control, such as general fund user fees, enterprise fund revenues, and interest, are exempt from this limitation. For fiscal year 2223, the city's appropriation limit is established to be $247.8 million. The actual amount of appropriations contained in the budget that is subject to the limitation is $161.9 million, for a difference of $85.8 million. As a result, the city is in accordance with state law and is well below its appropriations limit for fiscal year 2223. So in conclusion, the fiscal year 2223 proposed budget continues to fund premium programs and services to the community, with new appropriations focused on addressing the City Council's stated goals. It provides a robust citywide infrastructure program in keeping with the promises we made to the community as part of Measure P. It responsibly funds the city's pension obligations, including additional one-time funding to help reduce future recurring expenses in accordance with our multi-year pension funding plan, and it increases the city's formal reserves in order to further insulate Burbank's general fund from future economic events. We are fortunate that our general fund recurring budget is balanced for fiscal year 2223 and in each year of our five-year forecast, albeit by not a large margin. And despite the lingering economic unknowns that exist around the globe, the city of Burbank is very well positioned financially for the coming year and into the future. So I cannot conclude this final budget presentation without recognizing the incredible amount of effort put forth by my team with the preparation of this year's budget. I'd like to thank Deputy Finance Director Leanna McGurton, Budget Manager Joy Escalante, Revenue Manager Susan Langford, and Analyst Nathan Laitel, Kathy Harmillo, and Stephen Aragon for an outstanding job as always, along with all the other staff in financial services and throughout our city departments that helped produce the budget that is before you this evening. And with that, we recommend that the City Council approve the resolutions adopting the budget for the city, the housing authority, and the parking authority, as well as the citywide fee schedule and appropriations limit. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, and I liked that comment about the general fund is balanced in each year of our five-year forecast.
Thank you.
I don't want to talk about albeit, the slim is margin, but it's, right? It's balanced.
A positive is a positive.
Anyway, so thank you once again. Thank you and your staff. Obviously, there's a lot of work that goes into this, so many different pieces to the puzzle, then we come together and we put it together with your help and your staff's help. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I had a question from a resident, and can you please?
This is a public hearing item, so we should take testimony before council questions?
That's an excellent idea. That's why you're the city attorney. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. I guess I should stick to the script. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon public hearing card to the city clerk if you wish to speak. I encourage you to state your name when speaking at the podium to assist the city clerk with the minutes. For those wishing to call in during the public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have cards, and there's no callers online, so it's safe to close.
Okay, let's see, I've got to jump down way down here. Okay, there being no public comment, and I declare the public comment period closed. Does the City Council have any questions of staff? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. Can you please remind our residents how we can allocate Measure P funds to what projects?
Well, Measure P funds are split between general fund city operations, which go to the general fund, and then 50% goes towards infrastructure. And those funds could be utilized in a variety of different ways to fund infrastructure, both new projects, upgrade of existing facilities, and of course, the maintenance of those facilities.
Can you give some examples of a few potential projects?
Absolutely. So part of our Measure P funding each year is going towards our streets and roads program, paving and improving streets and roads and sidewalks. We also have our upgrades of our park irrigation program and irrigation controllers to help the city save water and to also modernize those items in our parks. There's a number of different projects.
Can they be used for buildings?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So facilities, parks, streets, really any capital asset that the city owns would be eligible and would be considered infrastructure and would be eligible to those Measure P funds. And it could be anything from, you know, maintaining those facilities to building a brand-new building, but...
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments? No? Councilmember Fruto, yes, comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the city manager. This is your budget, that you turned it to your bosses, the five council members through your staff, but I wanted to acknowledge you publicly, as we definitely spent a lot of time dancing around the budget, and you've answered all my questions. You were very patient with me, because I wanted to make sure I continue to work hard to balance the budget, but you do need to be acknowledged publicly of your time and effort in your budget that you proposed to us. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wow, that's a hot mic tonight. Whew, I'll sit back. No, really, someone was messing with my microphone, I think. No, I just wanted to piggyback off of what Councilmember Fruto said, and not only acknowledge the incredible work of our city manager and the entire city manager's office, but I also just wanted to speak to all the department representatives here tonight. This is kind of an anticlimactic moment in a lot of ways, but I feel strongly this is a budget we can all be really proud of. I know you're not all getting everything that you need, but I hope you know, and it does not go unnoticed, that you're continuing to provide unrivaled service to our residents, some of you at times operating off of a shoestring budget, it seems, but please know that your fine work goes unnoticed by all of us, and I hear a lot more compliments from our community members than I do the critiques. So thank you all for your hard work and the investment that you made in this budget. Councilmember Frutos, I know we've talked many times, you're always, you know, scrutinizing that budget, something I respect a lot about you. Ms. Becker, I think this is the first balanced budget we've had in a long time.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
I think this is a legacy project. This is an achievement we can all be incredibly proud of, and we're doing it without having to make service cuts. We're continuing to invest in our first responders, we're investing in critical infrastructure. Ms. Becker, thank you. And lastly, thank you to all of my colleagues, because I've really enjoyed hearing your thoughts and your contributions to this, and I just want to add, Mr. Mayor, I think it was your idea to up our general fund reserves, and I think that that is such a financially prudent move to do, so I hope that the taxpayers that might be watching or maybe reading about this next week know that, you know, it's incredible that we have not only righted the ship, but made a solid financial future at a time when most cities are struggling. We've done it in the middle of a pandemic through sound policymaking and financial decision-making, so hats off to everyone. I'm incredibly proud of the work and of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. Anyone else? Well, once again, thank you very much. Thank your staff for all the work they put into it.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
And I also have to mention our city manager and his staff. Thank you for all the work you've done to put this together, and I like, like I said, I like that comment about we're going to be in the black for at least the next five years.
Fingers crossed.
The slimmest of margins. Okay, I'll make the motion. Yes.
If it's okay, Mr. Mayor?
You know what? Let me close the hearing.
You got it.
I now declare the public hearing closed, and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion if we're done, colleagues?
I'll second it.
All right.
In a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Frutos and a second by Councilmember Schultz?
And the motion is?
Springer.
And the motion is, as stated in the staff report, number one, adopt the resolution of the council, the city of Burbank appropriating the budget for the fiscal year 2223 and making appropriations for amounts budgeted. Item number three, adopt the resolution of the council, the city of Burbank, determining and establishing the city's appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2223. Number four, adopt the resolution of the housing authority of the city of Burbank adopting the budget for fiscal year 2223. Number five, adopt the resolution of the parking authority for the city of Burbank adopting the budget for fiscal year 2223. Number six, adopt a resolution of the council, the city of Burbank, adopting the fiscal year 2223 citywide fee schedule. Madam City Clerk?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have two reports to council this evening. After staff's presentation, the City Council will proceed with in-person public comment only. For each item, please fill out a yellow public comment card and hand it to the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes to speak of the item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of public comment.
They're all leaving to work on next year's budget.
The first report is the consideration of a discussion of hosting a media industry job fair. Ms. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director, please present the report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes, members of council, Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director. On March 1st, 2022, Mayor Talamontes requested a first-step discussion regarding the possibility of the city organizing a job fair for media industry jobs. The purpose of tonight is to provide council the opportunity to discuss whether to direct staff to bring back a more complete analysis of this concept, including financial implications. Since last fall, the library has been home to Burbank Employment Connection, the city's resource for job seekers, so we would be the lead department on job fairs going forward. And in addition, at the library, we host the Spark Digital Media Lab, which is a workforce skills development space, so that could also support a potential media industry job fair. As you all know, the media industry dominates Burbank's employment landscape, representing more than a quarter of local jobs, with growth continuing. In developing a successful job fair targeted at media industry employment, a number of factors will have to be considered, including the timing. Recent job fairs in the area have had poor attendance. In fact, we just heard about one from a regional Verdugo Job Center meeting today, and it seems to be consistent throughout that the numbers they're seeing are not what they were pre-pandemic. This could be attributed to continued concern over in-person events, a fundamental change in how people seek jobs, or the general availability of jobs for most people who want them right at the moment. In addition, putting together a quality event will take some advanced planning work. Another area to explore would be the focus, namely which type and level of media industry position this event would target and which companies we would seek to have participate. And I finally want to mention that in using city resources for an event like this, we certainly want to make sure we'll maximize its positive impact and connect the right jobs. the right job seekers with the right skills to the right employers. So based on how recent the transition of Burbank Employment Connection is and the continuing changes brought on by the pandemic, staff would not be able to commit to organizing a job fair that would take place in this calendar year. And even for a fairly small-scale version, some funding would have to be identified from either city or other sources. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, my, my concept of this would have been to reach out to some unions that are, that are obviously media-related unions in the, not only in Burbank, but in the region.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we taking public comment on this?
Yes, we are right now as we speak.
Okay.
Is there any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I was just thinking.
Sorry, I would have waved at you, but yeah, no, no public comments.
Mr. City Attorney.
You were just providing public comment.
Yeah, that was my public comment. Anyway, so there is no public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So carry on, Mr. Mayor. And that's like, like I mentioned early on, partnering with unions because they could provide, even they, they could even provide a location to have, to have something like this. And I know it's going to take some time, I understand that, to coordinate this, but I think there's a lot of people out there that are willing to participate, and I know you brought before is the fact that they're going down in attendance, people aren't coming to job fairs as much as they used to before the pandemic, but it's going to be up to my colleagues. What do you think as far as, you want to weigh in? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'd have to second that. I think, I know a lot of the, the Ayatsis and the other guilds, they have apprenticeships. I know we mentioned, you know, the people who show up to these job fairs are folks who want jobs immediately, and they have, I know a lot of the unions have those programs where you basically, you walk in, you give them your resume, they put you through a training program, and they get you to work rather than some of, I would say, the higher-skilled jobs where you would need like an editing degree or some kind of, you know, film degree. It takes years to get to that point. I don't see any problem with expanding to that level. I mean, I'm sure if we do this a couple of times, then those opportunities are going to show up, right? But I think, you know, to start off with, let's get that low-hanging fruit, let's get the easy jobs for people to join, to get in there. I know a lot of the tech world, the, the video games, animation, the digital stuff, folks with very minimal degrees, you know, we're talking six months to 18 months kind of licenses, can get those immediate jobs as well. A lot of those positions are non-union, but, you know, let's bring them in too. I think we can, we can couple both, we can get both, both, both sides of that. And then the last thing I would say is, if we do move forward with this, if we could tie the funding to our veterans' job fair, I know that outreach is harder to raise money for and, and, and much more needed. So if we were to collect fees or, or create some sort of funding mechanism for the media jobs fair, I'd like to see a portion of that money guaranteed to offset our veterans' jobs fair. That way, we have both going, you know, one in the summer, one in the winter, or one in spring, one in fall kind of thing, and they sort of balance each other out and, and, you know, because there's other jobs, not necessarily media-related jobs, that a lot of our veterans need training and skill set and that kind of thing. So if we could tie those two together, for, for the funding, I would, I would like that.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I got to my comments, Ms. Goldman, I did have just two really quick questions for you. In looking at other jobs fairs right now, did you find that folks are still doing in-person job fairs? Were there any virtual or hybrid models that you also looked at for success?
I haven't done any comprehensive research at this point in time. I'm not aware of hybrid job fairs. There's definitely still plenty of online ones going, happening. That's probably still the majority of them, and some of the in-person ones are coming back. The one we just heard about earlier today was, took place in Glendale and was a partnership between the city, Glendale Community College, and an Armenian organization whose name I will not remember off the top of my head, and, and they just, you know, noted that they were disappointed in, in attendance, but that's not to say that there won't be a lot more people coming back to in-person events in the future. A hybrid one is an interesting concept. I haven't heard of one of those, and we'd have to explore how that would work and how you'd make, make sure access was equitable to everyone and things like that.
Thank you. Only other question I had was, if you did have some direction provided by council, have you looked at other community partners to help with either running or potentially funding the event? Chamber of Commerce, for example, some of our studio partners, folks like that?
I certainly wouldn't want to call out any names who would potentially be able to fund this because everyone is dealing with their own budgets, but we could seek that out. I, I feel like one of the most valuable partners for us probably would be a college like possibly Glendale or LA Valley College because they have a lot of expertise in this subject area, and, and that is something that, you know, the city has done very, the city itself as an entity does not, is not very experienced in job fairs, nor are my staff. This will be our first one, potentially, and so why not reach out to the people who know a lot more? We would definitely work with all of the community partners in terms of advertising, identifying businesses that would be ideal to bring in. There's potential for even maybe some learning components, also advertising other services, not just the ones Burbank Employment Connection offers, but the Burbank Adult School has its continuing education. There are lots of specialized training programs out there, so I think it would definitely involve a lot of partnerships.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, a couple of comments. Yeah, no more questions for you. So in looking at the staff report, you know, I agree that a lot of these jobs do have certain barriers to entry, and I think that looking at our veteran population and retraining those folks would be one population I think would be worth looking at. Another would be our, our students. A lot of our young people right here in Burbank might want to break into the entertainment industry, and folks that don't have someone who worked in that industry or maybe don't have someone who's gone to college. That was certainly my case. Having these kind of opportunities gives them access to information, access to employers that maybe they wouldn't otherwise have. The only other thing I would say is, we should never, ever forget also looking at folks, formerly incarcerated folks, folks that are trying to re-enter our workforce. We can't forget about those individuals either. So any sort of jobs fair, jobs program, I would want to see it looking at those three categories of people, our veterans, those who are trying to re-enter the workforce, including those formerly incarcerated, and our children. I, I think that those would be three populations I would like to see support for.
You know, New York Film Academy might be a good one as well. And keep in mind, colleagues, this is just the first step, so if we're in agreement to move it forward to the second step, she could come back with more information. Councilmember Frutos?
Mr. Mayor, I'm definitely supportive of bringing this back to a second step. Here's my two cents for what it's worth. I, I don't know why we don't reach out to the Valley Economic Alliance, because we sit there, we pay dues, we're a member. I think there's a lot of resources there we can tap into. I, I got it on the report, we all got it, that, you know, we got to think about the cost of the rental and space and equipment, food, speaker. I think we can avoid a lot of that if we just direct staff to really reach out through our partnerships. We have our economic development team, so we don't really have to spend more money. We just have to think outside the box to give our staff direction. And today, I attended a educators workshop roundtable on the USS Iowa. The Navy, just that branch of the military, does provide, how would I say, ever bridge that the Navy actually provides funds so people leaving the military, and they're usually ninety, nine-year veterans now that are getting ready to exit, they actually provide job fairs. They partner up with cities, they partner up with big corporations. For example, what was it? Northrop Grumman was there. They want to hire 5,000 people in three months. So the need is there, it's a perfect timing for this agenda. It's just a matter of giving staff direction, so I definitely support it, but I, I really need that we, you know, reach out to the military because they've got funding available for these type of job fairs for our veterans, and I'll report this out at the end, what I learned at this roundtable today that I represented us on. But definitely, I do support the second step, coming back.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes, I agree. I support a job fair, you know, in this, in a first step and second step. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? And Vice Mayor?
I wanted to ask one, one more question, Ms. Goldman. If we were to have this become a regular thing, just speculating out, would it lead to a more regular veterans' jobs fair? Because I know we've had those in the past, but they're not as consistent. Do you believe that moving forward with the media jobs fair would be able to let us also have a more consistent veterans' jobs fair as well for the other jobs listed that aren't necessarily media?
I really wouldn't want to speculate on that at this point, not having been involved with the organization of the veterans' job fair. I am not intimately familiar with how that was funded and organized and even what prompted it, but we can certainly look into that in more detail and see whether there's a, a connection.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see that too.
That wasn't a city-led?
It was a city-led.
It was?
Yes, yes. From Burbank, Burbank Employment Connection when it was in management services. It was just put on hold during the pandemic.
Okay. Thank you. So we need a, just a vote in regards to moving forward, colleagues? Should we go to the second step?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion based upon the input we have given our staff that this come back for, for a more complete analysis of hosting a media industry job fair, but not just the media, let's look at other, you know, within the region here, unions, military, our, our school district for our STEM and STEAM students, you know, see what, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next report is the consideration of a discussion regarding a resolution to invite Arezzo Italy to be a city of Burbank's sister city. Ms. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director, please present the report.
All right. Good evening again. I think this is the first time in my years here that I've had most of the agenda. All right, so our second first step this evening concerns Burbank's sister city program, which is coordinated on behalf of the city by the Library Services Department. On April 5th, 2022, Mayor Talamontes requested a first-step discussion about considering adding a new sister city, Arezzo Italy. The purpose of tonight is to provide council the opportunity to discuss whether to direct staff to bring back a resolution and/or other information to inform a decision about sister cities. Burbank's sister cities' relationships stretch back more than 60 years to our first sister city, which was Solna, Sweden. A second, Inchon, Korea, was added soon after, and then Burbank added a third sister city, Haberoni, Botswana, in nineteen, in the 1970s, and a fourth, Ota, Japan, in the 1980s. Arezzo Italy is a city of about 100,000 population in the Tuscany region. Its economy is driven by tourism, and it is known for an international coral competition. Through Ms. McFarland, the Public Information Officer, we have established contact with the Chief of Staff in the mayor's office should this move forward. The general process by which Burbank would invite another city to join in a formal sister city relationship involves two to three steps. First, the city council would consider a resolution drafted by staff inviting Arezzo to join in a sister city relationship. If approved by council, then Burbank would notify Arezzo of the invitation, and the Arezzo City Council would need to respond in kind with a resolution of their own. Finally, if party, if both parties are interested, a ceremonial resolution could be signed by both cities, and this would be based on a template from Sister Cities International, that's the parent organization of which the city of Burbank is an institutional member. I'd like to share a few other informational notes before you start your discussion. First, establishing a formal sister city relationship does not mean any activities automatically happen. We've had varied activity with our current sister cities over the years. Activities require resources, and council currently only budgets $14,000 for scholarships and supplies toward the program right now. There are no staff positions supporting sister city activities. Second, we also have a nonprofit partner organization, the Burbank Sister City Committee. The primary role of this group of volunteers in recent years has been to organize student exchanges with Ota and Inchon annually, and that takes their full capacity. They have no formal role in the process of adding a sister city, but I have notified them about this request, and I would suggest if this moves forward that you include in your direction to staff to invite the Burbank Sister City Committee to provide their perspective at a later meeting. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report, and let me start off with this, and just the reason I suggested this. I was at a function up at the Castaway, and, oh, public comment. Anybody here for public comment?
Sorry.
There being no public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Jeez, they got to learn and read the script. Anyway, so the mayor was up there attending this event that I went to present a certificate of, of recognition to the main people that were involved in putting that together, and through the discussion with them, they said, oh, you know, did you know that the mayor of Arezzo Italy is here? I wasn't aware. He says, here, come over here, we'll introduce you, and he was taking part in a panel discussion about what they do in Arezzo and, and the, the nexus of being a media capital of the world and what they do and the, the cultural, the aspect of their city. So we had introduced each other, and then we had dinner, actually just snacks, and Ms. Simone Farland was there to coordinate this meeting of both mayors, and I asked him, if you have time, let's, I'll go show you my, my, my city hall, and, because obviously we're very proud of the city hall that we have and then the council chambers as well. So I drove him down here, we toured the city hall, showed him the chambers, and he was very impressed, obviously, it's a great building, it's a great facility, and he says, you know what? We could be a great sister city. And I go, well, that sounds, that sounds good. I mean, it's, it would be good to just at least research it, look into it, and see what we can come up with, and he says, definitely. So took him back to, to the party, dropped him off, and we said our goodbyes. He had to catch a plane, by the way, and he noticed that we had an airport. As we were out there in the patio, he saw the planes taking off from Burbank, you know, Hollywood Burbank Airport. He says, we have an airport as well. So anyway, there's, there's a lot of connection that we, being the culture city that they are. They're sister cities with Norman, Oklahoma, because the University of Oklahoma has a, has a facility there that, that's where they send their, their students when they go study abroad to Italy, that's where they go. So it was interesting, and I'm just bringing it up for discussion to my colleagues, see what you feel, moving it forward to the next step, possibly, just to get more information. And, you know, it's a, it might be a good time to look at the sister city committee concept. I'd like to see what other cities are doing, because over the time, over the time that the sister city committee has been together, they've been very good, very successful, but what happens is that my kids start in the ninth grade or the 10th grade, and then they graduate out of the program. You know, they might be involved in the, in going over there, and, and we host when those students come over here, but then the parents are out of the program, are no longer involved. Some of them stay, but the majority of them no longer involved because my students, my, my kids aren't involved anymore. So there's a big transition of, of help, of volunteers, for example. So I would like to take a look and see what other cities are doing with their sister city programs, what have they established, you know, how many people does it take to run a sister city program within the city? Because like is mentioned, resources are needed, people are needed to run a program like that. Right now, the director's been running that for the past several years. But anyway, I just encourage my colleagues to maybe support going to the next step and see what, what could come back from Ms. Goldman. Colleagues, any comments? Councilmember Frutos?
I support, I support this moving to a second step, but I also support some of the topics you brought up. One, I noticed like when I was the mayor back in 2015, I went to our sister city in Inchon, Korea, and I had a specific mission, and that was to reciprocate the friendship, the, the wings of friendship. But as I was kind of writing my journal later on that evening, the one thing that we don't have here that most other cities have is that not only did, does the mayor go, but somebody from the chamber goes to represent economic, to see what type of, you know, business relationships could be established to promote equal economic development for both countries. So I, I would like to see that. If we're going to increase the funding and possibly talk about adding maybe a part-time staffer, I can't justify a full-time staffer, but I would like to see a more structured sister city because I do believe it's time to revisit it, like you said, Mr. Mayor, because the current sister city program we have, it just stops with visiting and that's it. I really think we have to look at it more strategically of the, you know, the, the, the art and, and the culture exchange, but not just at the high school level, which I but not just at the high school level, which I think is important. I'm not saying I don't want that, but I really think that the next evolution would be the partnerships, you know, of opening up like, hey, you know, the college, you know, high school students and maybe they can get a scholarship to learn Italian, you know, not knowing that part of the world, that, I'm early here in California most of the times. But I'm ready to move this to the next step for further discussion, see what staff comes back. But I really like as a council, the five of us, is maybe establish some goals that we would like to see on the second step that is really open to business development, exchange, not just with the students, but you know, scholarships to learn the language, really live there versus what we've been doing where, you know, we visit them for a week, we stay in our family homes, which is great, and you build great relationships. But how does that really open up to other different avenues? That's my only concern as we move forward, but definitely I do support second step.
Great idea, that's great comments. I mean, obviously it's gonna take money, I mean, to begin with, it's gonna take money. And then the fact it's, it's a big elephant, we have to take it one step at a time and see as we move through the steps, let's see how we can, you know, make it more successful.
Yeah, because the one exciting thing that I did like is when we as a city supported the Special Olympics as a whole city when the World Games are here and it was both our sister cities of Botswana and Zimbabwe that were here. So I said, this is to me how I feel our sister city friendship should be, but I haven't seen any more of that type of, and it doesn't have to be, you know, a Special Olympics, but it has to be tied into, you know, to really cement that partnership.
And I agree with you, you know, over the years, we haven't been very proactive. The city of Burbank hasn't, for example, when I went to Incheon, Korea, I was invited by their mayor to celebrate our anniversary and they paid everything for us because we didn't have the funding. I mean, they paid for my flight, they paid, you know, room and board. And so it's just kind of embarrassing when you deal like that, that we can't, you know, because we don't have the money for that. So we have four sister cities and two of them really are not very active, both ways, you know, it's a two-way street. The other two are active because we have student exchanges. And that's great, that's a good learning experience for those students that get to go over there. And you know, we've been at several of their meetings, they're going away dinners. But, so, I would encourage my colleagues, go ahead.
I also agree with you, I felt that way that when I arrived in Incheon, a staffer was with me the whole time. And that's why I really bring up our goals, are we willing to fund a staffer? Because from the time I landed at the airport, there was a staffer from Incheon from the mayor's office with me. And it was at my beck and call during the whole time, including waiting with me at the airport when it was time to go back, greeting me with a nice, you know, flowers and a fruit basket. And we don't do that and I think we need to step up to reciprocate that type of level from mayor to mayor. I'd like to see that, but again, let's, I've definitely moved to a second step.
Yeah, we're not, we're not in the mode of honoring or, you know, receiving and, anyway, that's a different story. Councilmember Schultz, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement with both of you. So first of all, I support moving it to a second step. I think it's very exciting how this even came about. And Arezzo Italy does have a lot of similarity to Burbank, both in size and tourism-focused economy. To your point, Councilmember Frutos, I would agree. You know, Ms. Goldman, as far as a follow-up report, you know, sending representatives to any foreign city are gonna have a lot of costs associated with that, but I think that one thing we could look at is making use of this technology. We have the ability to communicate with leaders around the world. And so to your point, Councilmember Frutos, I'd like us to see, and this is more just feedback for staff, but as we consider maybe down the road, making a mid-year appropriation and dedicating some more resources to this program, I'd like us to think about how can we take that input from around the world and have economic or transportation policy summits with leaders of similarly sized cities who maybe have approaches and solutions that we're not even thinking of. And similarly, we can export some of the things that are working really well here in Burbank to the rest of the world. I think that is how you make a sister city program really, really run well. It's the exchange of ideas and so I fully support where you're going with it, Councilmember Frutos. And look, I think there are a variety of options and I think there's still a way to do it cost-effectively. I think staffing would be part of it. We do have an incredible use of technology. We can be on a Zoom with the mayor of Arezzo Italy, there's only a nine-hour time difference and we can talk, you can talk, Mr. Mayor, economic policy, transportation policy, housing policy. So we can do that on an annual basis, I think that'd be really exciting. So I support moving it to the next step.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I mean, just geographically speaking, you know, Sweden, Botswana, Korea, Japan, Italy works. I say we go with Italy. Then next we find something in South America, maybe Australia, you know, cover the globe. And honestly, we haven't had a new city in almost 30 years. You know, there's, there's other cities out there, so I think, I think it works. And you are absolutely correct with their, their, the economic factors in that city, I think, really partner well with what we're doing here. You know, they look to a media capital of the world to learn about their tourism and, you know, the fact that they have this big choir festival or competition. I think that'd be a great, you know, thing to consider, sending, sending one of us over there when they have their, their competition.
So whoever draws a short straw.
Yeah, no, you get to, you get to be a celebrity judge. So yeah, I'd love to, yeah, move this forward, I think it's great.
All right, any other comments?
I support moving it to a second step.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we're done, I'd like to make the motion.
Please.
I'd like to, I'd like to make the recommendation, council, to a, bring back for a second step for council consideration on a resolution inviting, help me out with the.
Arezzo?
Arezzo Italy to be a new city of Burbank sister city. And staff, I believe you've got kind of direction from the council.
I'll second.
Second, bless you. Second, motion and second, any further discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Si, molto bene.
Okay, then, Mayor Talamontes.
When the moon hits her, I like a big pizza pie at seven.
Ms. Goldman, thank you very much for the report. All right, this is time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Colleagues, Councilmember Frutos?
Okay.
You've got the three or four pages, you said?
Yep, well, I still have the city clerk here and Councilmember Schultz next to me. All right, going back to Wednesday, May the 18th, I attended the Los Angeles County Civil Brand Commission for Institutional Inspections. Later on that afternoon, I attended the ribbon cutting of Advance Auto and it's the old Pet Boys on Olive that basically, it's kind of interesting how they redid it. So Advance Auto sells the auto parts that is not connected to Pet Boys. Pet Boys now is just a service type of business, you know, change tires, tune-ups, new batteries, et cetera. But it's really interesting and it's big on the East Coast. So it's kind of nice that we still have our auto store. I know for a while I'll be thinking about it as Pet Boys, because I went, you know, it's hard to kind of change my little pattern of going to Pet Boys, but, okay, moving on. Thursday, May the 19th, I attended the MSG Spear Studios Dome Grand Tour. And for the residents, that's that big gray dome on Hollywood Way, right by the airport or next to the Burbank Airport Marriott there. And for the residents, there is a Las Vegas dome that's three times, four times larger than the one that we have here in Burbank that's being built in Las Vegas. And pretty much here is where they design the shows up that are, you know, in the works, the lighting, the projection. And talk about, you know, being old and going to the Hollywood Cinematic Dome. And that was pretty exciting, watching Saturday Night Live and Grease in that movie theater. And now to have this new technology that started at the old iHeart studio to this production of experimenting and basically developing the product, the entertainment of the next way of seeing movies here in Burbank, part of the media capital of the world. Later on that eve, correction, then going back to Friday, May the 20th, I attended the Burbank Masonics Lodge Second Annual Essay Contest and, most important, Teacher Appreciation Awards Ceremony. On Sunday, May the 22nd, I attended the Guinea Fest, the Fourth Annual Armenian Wine and Spirits Festival. And according to the organizer, there was approximately 1,000 community members and neighboring city from Glendale and local that attended the event. I think that's great because they utilized their beautiful castaway and, boy, was it hard getting out. It was tough.
Sure was.
Yesterday, I had a Zoom meeting with our council, with my colleague, Councilmember Sharon Springer, regarding the plastic ban that was passed by the council and funded approximately three years ago. So I just got an update with that and, you know, Councilmember Springer and I and Commissioner Vicky Kirschenbaum was on that and surf rider Craig Hamill, yes. Okay, and then today, in preparation for the mayor's agenda item about the job fair and everything, I was able to represent us as a council member on the Educators Workshop Roundtable that was held aboard the USS Iowa, the Navy ship. And a lot of it, it was interesting, there's like discussion, you know, what's better, STEAM, which involves arts, or STEM? But they both agreed that this is where the future is. But one of the questions that came up is most young people, influencers, are quick YouTube, Twitter, and they have a large following. So the discussion at the roundtable is what as adult leaders, influencers that we are through our elected office or educators, how do we transfer that into the interest of, you know, beginning in junior high school? And they didn't stop right at the senior high school, although now it's middle school. It went on into college because there is not a fair equity that they talked about at the college level because it's still pretty much a male dominant field regarding STEM in college. So it was a really robust discussion. And I was really surprised, Northrop Grumman was there and they were one of the panelists in the roundtable discussion. And they were saying that right now, they want to hire 5,000 people. And most of it's up in Northern California, Sunnyvale, that they were talking about, or down in El Segundo. But they're having trouble recruiting people to work for them and they need like 5,000 employees within the next three months. So that was interesting and that's how I learned that in, in the Navy, just the Navy, because that's, that we're there, only 38% of veterans that are leaving at least the Navy, that doesn't include the other branches of our military, 38% really apply for education benefits. And the Navy, what I learned today, is that they will offer as part of their incentive package that you take X number of period time off, housing, pay, benefits, schooling, to go to college. Because the Navy wants you to get higher educated, get that degree. Most of the people on the panelists had, you know, basically their masters and PhDs and they started just, you know, pretty much right out of college or they went to high school and then they got their degree and went to Officer Candidate School. And I was, I was very impressed with what the Navy has to offer. So the message is, you know, especially with for your agenda item, they need to be at the table to talk about because most people coming out of the Navy leave about nine years. So the Navy's hurting for STEM, you know, men and women to join the military. And then in closing, their biggest tool that came out in the roundtable discussion is connections between businesses, leaders and communities, and teachers. That's are the best influencers to make math and science and the arts as something fun that kids can relate to. Because that was their biggest thing, is how do we get them to, you know? And then they even talked about, you know, you don't even ask a child anymore, what is your worst subject? Now they're saying, what?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, this is going well beyond brief reports of council activities. You're gonna make me have to write a memo.
This is gonna have to be, this is gonna have to be an agenda item. Thank you, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I didn't want to cut my colleague off, he was doing such, I was so immersed in what he was saying. Okay, colleagues, anyone else? Vice Mayor?
I can go, all right, thank you. On the 18th of May, I attended the Hero's Breakfast at Belmont Village. I was there apparently right after you left, so I just missed you. Well, it's great, the seniors had to, they invited firefighters, they had burritos and donuts. It was great to see the community there. The same day later, I attended the ribbon cutting at Advance Auto and I couldn't place which business it was. Thank you for saying Pet Boys, it was on the tip, I'm like, I know this place, I've been here before. Pet Boys, Pet Boys, that's what it was. And then the next day, we did the grand opening for the Sphere, very cool, very cool. They, they created their own camera, they needed such high resolution, like nothing existed for them to shoot. They actually had to build their own camera to do that. So yeah, it's all proprietary technology and they're all created right here in Burbank and it's gonna be distributed, not just to Vegas, but they said all over the world, once they get more of those domes built. I met with, on that same day, I went to the one-year open house for a place called Believe in Big Change. Councilmember Schultz was there. It's a, I guess, I mean, I wouldn't call it a halfway house per se, but it's much more of, it's a home for women that are having trouble with either substance abuse or having just been incarcerated and now they're out on the street. It's a wonderful place, Believe in Big Change, please look them up, they need donations, they need help and they're doing good work here in Burbank. I met with the People's City Council, they took a look at our budget and they were happy with what we were doing, so I do like that. On a personal note, that same day, I had an evaluation for, to be diagnosed with autism, which is interesting to me because I thought I'd been diagnosed for years, but I never actually had my insurance pay for it, so it didn't count. So thanks to the city for having a very robust health plan so that I could finally get this and alone behold I am. They told me something I already knew. And then the next day, I met with one of the founding members of the Burbank Young Professionals. We talked a little bit about working from home and how the tech industry has evolved, that there's a lot more businesses from home. And I'm looking to see if we need to do anything for agenda item, I don't have anything yet, Mr. City Manager, so calm down.
But he's thinking about it.
Thinking about it, thinking about it. We'll see, we'll see. And then yesterday, I attended the Los Angeles Equine Advisory Committee, they meet over at the Equestrian Center. They have a lot of stuff on their agenda, they're looking at a lot of changes over there. And I bumped into former mayor Gable Luddy at the spot right there, wonderful place, wonderful place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. I attended the Burbank Adult School graduation, a very moving ceremony with lots of very proud friends and family. I had two Zoom meetings with my Housing Policy Committee, Alex Arseniaga and Mary Bell Leyland, and we've decided on a rental equity to ownership housing policy. And we're still very early in that. I attended the Race Relay in person at Buena Vista Library with Burbank Housing Relations Council. The essay contest, several of us were there and attended Guinea Fest. And this morning, the Burbank Fire Department 2022 Departmental Celebrations and that too was very moving with some very proud families. And today, I attended a Zoom on SCAG's Preserving Affordable Homes in Priority Growth Areas. And it was a little program on the different programs and tools available for that. Very interesting, some good tools and an interesting takeaway is to further study community land trusts. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much of what I have to report was already mentioned, so I'll go quick. Saturday, May 7th, I attended Burbank Fire Service and Police Service Day. I then didn't do anything for 10 days because I was sequestered in the master bedroom in self-isolation, but I'm back and happy to be here. Tuesday, May 17th, and I'll mention, I forwarded this to the city manager, it's already in your inbox, Mr. Hess, for dissemination to the council. Every Town for Gun Safety was hosting a webinar entitled "The Importance of the ATF", that's the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, and how states and cities can partner on gun trafficking and illegal guns. That entire presentation was recorded. Spoiler alert, it starts with actually appointing a director of the ATF, which the president has nominated. A lot of great information in there, so you'll all have a chance to watch that recording back. And I felt it was both timely and very helpful. And I felt it was both timely and, and very helpful. Um, Thursday, May 19th, I attended the Burbank Association of Realtors. They had a presentation from Jumpstart ADU regarding pre-approved ADU floor plans. Fascinating stuff. Uh, MSG Sphere Studios, uh, Dome Grand Opening and Believe in Big Change, all that same day. Uh, Friday, the 20th, Burbank Masonic Lodge, a wonderful event, they did a great job with it. Uh, Guinea Fest, uh, on Sunday with all of you. And lastly, today, in preparation for our upcoming joint meeting with the, uh, BUSD, uh, Board of Education, I had a, a good productive meeting with Dr. Agakanyan about the potential of a school incubator, uh, something that I hope will make it onto our joint meeting agenda and I'll talk about that with the city manager later. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll add, um, just a couple of things that I participated in. I attended the Hero's Breakfast, like you were saying, uh, celebrated EMS Week at Belmont Village, Burbank. I gave the welcome speech at the SCAPPA Annual Conference and it, and, uh, here, it was held here at the Marriott. Uh, so kudos to our general manager, uh, for bringing that to Burbank. Um, I also attended the Martial Arts Museum Event, Michael Matsuda. Uh, I don't know what his title is, but he's the owner, uh, of that, uh, Martial Arts Museum Event. And, uh, you know, there was a lot of people there, they were handing out, uh, tasers. And this is in conjunction with A- Asian American Month. Um, so that was very well attended. I also attended the Burbank Temple Ebanuel 75th Anniversary Evening Under the Stars. I saw, Councilmember, uh, Frudos was there as well. Um, I attended the Guinea Fest. And after the Guinea, I left the Guinea Fest early to attend the, uh, Armenian Burbank Screening of the Desire to Live. It's an hour and a half film that takes you to Armenia, um, and to talk to the residents that live in the various towns and to give their perspectives of what's happening in Armenia through the war that they're going through. It's just really sad, you know, but there's a lot of hope, obviously, coming from those areas. And they speak to a lot of seniors, obviously, that've been there, that can remember the way it was before the war started. Uh, they speak to young 10, 11, 12-year-olds to give their perspective of what they're seeing and what's happening. Uh, so it was, uh, it was long, but at the same time, it was very touching. I mean, it really hit home and, you know, when I was watching, I'm thinking, I'm so honored to, to be here, but I'm, I so appreciate the fact that we're here in America, uh, living the way we are and free, the freedoms that we have. It's just, it was just an amazing event. I really enjoyed being there. Um, and today we had the Burbank Fire Department 2022 Departmental Celebration honoring past and present members. They went through a list of about a, about 10 or a dozen, uh, firefighters that have passed on. And you know, as they're reading the names, I go, I worked with him, I worked with him, I worked with him, I worked with him. Uh, so it was very touching, but at the same time, that was turned into a celebration of the families that were there for promotions. A lot of promotions were being, you know, new badges were being handed out, a lot of families were enjoying that, obviously. It's nice to see the kids of, of the firefighters that are coming on board. Um, but, uh, it was very nice. It's, it's touching for me, obviously, going back to my roots in essence, uh, coming from the fire department. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a nice moment for me, deep inside, I felt good about it. That's all I have. Um, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Councilmember Schultz?
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I'm requesting a first step report regarding the enactment of a local ordinance to number one, codify the existing state requirement that certain commercial establishments post a human trafficking notice. And importantly, number two, create a local enforcement process.
Is that clear, Mr. City Manager? Okay, Councilmember Frudos?
Thank you. Um, Mr. City Manager, I was wondering if, uh, the next council meeting, the under-city managers' report, um, a lot of concerns of what happened in Texas, maybe the chief can, uh, 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 make a presentation at that time, just to, we know how prepared we are and, you know, what type of ongoing training do we have with our schools to make sure that, you know, the community knows that we're being proactive with that. And then, uh, two, um, I'd like to get a re- a presentation report on what our police department through its ordinances does to, you know, make sure that these gun stores are complying with, you know, our, our local ordinances, state and federal government. Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, Councilmember Springer?
If, if I could, um, the second item may be appropriately combined with the item that we're already working on that Vice Mayor Anthony asked me about, um, only because it's the same staff and I think compliance is an important part a- aspect of not only the item that we're working on, but, you know, yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would like to, like for, uh, to review the initial outline of the Burbank Single Use Plastics Policy and assess the resources and staff support for potentially fast-tracking the ordinance. Thank you, that's all.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, we now adjourn to the meeting to Tuesday, June 7th, for a joint meeting in the council chamber. Uh, public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following four ways. In person for general public comment, public hearings and reports to council. By calling in directly to the council meeting at 238-3335, to speak during the general public comment, period, and public hearing items only. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage and by emailing the city council directly. So thank you very much and good night, everybody.